...the July 28th meeting of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board of Directors. If you'll all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Perry.
Please remain standing. Dear God, we ask that your wisdom will guide us as we seek to accomplish the goals of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Ms. James Perryman.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlena Shaffer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Ewing.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Shaffer.
Here.
Thank you.
Scott, any ceremonial matters or presentations this evening?
No, Mr. President.
Any late communications for us this evening?
No, Mr. President.
You've fallen right in line, it's the way to do it. Public comments, anyone here from the public wishing to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll move to the consent calendar. Before we do the consent calendar, ladies and gentlemen, I want to ask your indulgence in moving new business items 24 and 25 up to before public hearings on our agenda. Is the board okay with that? Okay, then, right after the consent calendar, we'll deal with new business items 24 and 25. No on it. Okay? Consent calendar, anything to pull or anything to discuss?
I'll move it. Second.
Discussion. Call for the question and all is in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, five to zero. All right, let's move to new business, item number 24, Mesa Water District Optimal Governance Structure Study. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to turn this over to Mark Davis, our district treasurer. He has over thirty years of experience in governmental auditing, accounting, and finance management, and he has reviewed the study extensively, so I believe it would be more appropriate for him to come on and study, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Davis.
Okay, Mark.
Thanks, Mr. President, and board members. As Scott had mentioned, he asked me to take a look at the report, provide my thoughts in regard to it, and in going through reviewing the report, I did find a number of issues related to the report and a number of flaws in the report that I do believe should be addressed prior to any agency for acting on the results of the report. So just some general comments that I've got about the report itself. In looking at the company that did the report, I have some concern as to the objectivity that was used in the preparation of the report. Arcadis prepared the report, and they are currently, they have recently had a contract with Mesa Water to do other work for Mesa Water, and they've proposed on a number of engagements, a number of projects, over the years with Mesa Water where they weren't successful.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Mark. Do you want questions during your presentation, or do you want to wait till you're done?
Preform dialogue, I'm fine with that.
Are you okay with that? All right, then, just a quick question. You said that they had done previous studies?
They had done a previous contract, they had a previous contract with Mesa Water to do a, I forget exactly the specific job, but a $140,000 contract to do a study for Mesa Water, not related to this, completely separate from this.
Oh, that's okay.
And it was a different type of optimization study, whether it be with a break structure, whether it be with some other type of thing, it was completely different than this study.
So the scope of those studies really didn't equate to what the scope of this study was?
That's true.
Okay. Mark?
They basically had three consultants, and after reviewing the RFP from the three consultants, I told Mesa Board I thought they chose the wrong consultant, because the other consultants had expertise in areas where you potentially have questions or comments or concerns, and I also did, and they changed the study based on my input two weeks ago. They changed it incorrectly, and I told them I would help them change it correctly, but they didn't seem, they don't much care. They just tried to enhance their position. You know, I told them I'm the regional expert in line cleaning, and Bachmiller said he'd had the same problem, so we both had the same problem with the line cleaning portion of the report. They didn't change that part of it. They didn't change the recommendation, minimal amount of cost. Basically, the choice was whether you do it in-house or contracted out. And both Bachmiller and I justified a different position than the report did.
Scott.
They asked of me.
Mr. President, is it okay if I ask the board if they can refrain out of comments or questions until Mark finishes his report?
Yeah, I'm a-
Because it's really, he took a lot of time and depth detailing this report, and I think it's really important for you and the public to hear.
Yeah, good point, okay. It's all yours.
Okay, so then going back again to the objectivity- When you have a firm that is doing work for, or you're looking at it, you're looking at a project to consolidate two agencies, and the firm that is doing the study is under contract with one of the agencies for something completely different, and has a tendency to bid on projects for that agency for other types of items, there is a perception that they may be biased in how they're going to present the results of that report. So that's one concern that I have. In the sources section of the report, they identify that the documents used to come up with their estimated savings included audited financial statements of the district, of our district, from 2011, '12 through '14, '15, and those financial statements are more than a year old, and so all the information that they're basing their results on represent financial activity that occurred over a year ago, and it does not actively reflect what the current financial condition is of this particular, of this district. It just doesn't make sense to use outdated information when you're trying to do a study of this magnitude. The study also utilized prior budgets and the current biennial budget, the current 2015 to '17 biennial budget. Likewise, that budget was adopted more than a year ago by you. One thing that the study did not address was all the various changes that you've made to that budget since it's been adopted. More than a year ago, we sat here at meetings, and you've had budget adjustments that you've made changes to, but the study doesn't acknowledge the changes that you made to your spending plan during that period. General comment, the study talks about Mesa Water being a AAA rated individual special district, and that statement's just a little bit misleading. While the AAA rating that they're referring to is related to their two bond issuances that they have, they have two debt issuances, their certificates of dislocation, and both those bond issues are in fact AAA rated. That part's right, but it's- It's an incorrect characterization to say that they are a AAA rated district. The bonds are AAA rated. The approach section of the report outlines various assumptions that Arcadis used when they put their report together, and it was interesting, and I'm going to read a quote from the report here. The report says, "Actual savings to be realized depend on a number of actions and conditions that cannot be predicted at this time and could be less than or greater than the estimate in the study. No assurance is given that the results forecasted herein will be achieved." And going back to the results, you really need to focus on that statement. There's lots of estimates, lots of assumptions, lots of historical information that Arcadis used in the preparation of the study, and they're giving themselves a good out here. You really shouldn't rely on it. They're telling you, you shouldn't rely on the results of this. They talk about an asset replacement plan, CIP, and Arcadis makes the comment that they're unclear whether CMSD has a 100-year, a long-term, such as a 100-year asset replacement plan. And we do have a- Replacement planning model, and this was something that was developed by an outside consultant back in 2011, and the model is really based upon, not 100 years, but it could be if we so chose. The model was based on a 35-year rolling look ahead as to what was going to be needed to improve the district's infrastructure, and the district since 2011 has been using that model as they prepare their, as you prepare and adopt your budgets and look at what CIP projects are going to do. That model is used in the development of what those funding levels should be. One of the interesting things I found was the service area that was to be included by the city. To me, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense. They come out and say that the service area is going to remain unchanged, and so here you're going to have an agency that's going to be responsible for water, sewer, and trash, but for portions of the agency, some other agency is going to be responsible for your water, or some other agency is going to be responsible for your sewer or for your trash. It seems to me that when you're looking at an optimal structure, you're going to want to have one service area that is going to be consistent across all lines of your business and not be jagged as you get to the periphery of that. Now, that would make this process a whole lot more difficult, because it's been involved the County of Orange, the City of Newport Beach, and Irvine Ranch Water District. To make it be the right study, all those entities, as well as the Costa Mesa Sanitary District and Mesa Water should be at the table, and all should be talking about it. So then going into some of the specific issues regarding savings that they've identified, they talked about four areas where savings would be generated. One is looking at the organization as a whole, second looking at real estate, third being financial management. I don't have a floor here. Line cleaning?
Yep.
No, no. So looking at the organization itself, they indicated that there would be savings by combining the two agencies, and this is looking at labor. There would be savings by combining the two agencies, because there's probably functions that happen here at this district and functions that happen at the other district that are duplicate. I happen to agree with that. I would agree that there would be savings resulting from that. My issue is that the methodology used to determine what those savings were is really flawed. And that centers around the fact that they used the information that was available to them. They went out to your website, they read job descriptions of people's, what they would do here, and then looked at those job descriptions, looked at job descriptions at Mesa Water, and saw whether there might be some similarities. The problem with that is that job descriptions tend to be a little bit more vague or a little bit more broad in what the duties of an individual person might be, because you might have an individual doing a variety of different things, and so there's really no way to accurately determine where those savings would be without physically talking to all the employees and getting a good understanding of what those employees actually do in their day-to-day work. Because it's been my experience in the organizational reviews that we've done, oftentimes you find that what an employee actually does varies, it's different from what their job description says. The study does indicate that there would be about $600,000 in additional costs that would be required to, maybe one-time costs to combine the two agencies. This would be illegal and financial costs, and I do agree that there would be some costs associated with getting all, everything that's necessary together to be able to combine two agencies. The one, the study allocates all costs and all savings equally across three different funds, wastewater fund, water fund, and sewer fund, I'm sorry, solid waste fund. And there's a little bit of fallacy in that. Those, whenever costs are allocated across multiple objectives, there has to be some nexus as to how those costs are going to be allocated, and you can't use just a, I'm going to allocate these costs equally as being the proper nexus. A more appropriate allocation would be maybe on the total expenditures that each of these funds are incurring, or maybe the total number of personnel that are involved in each of these funds. To be able to get the right amount of cost to those funds, because you have, each of those funds have different rate payers, and those rate payers are not going to want to pay more than their fair share of what those costs would be. So just widely allocating it on an equal basis makes no sense. The study identifies that there would be an annual savings and personnel cost of $1.1 million, but I couldn't find anywhere in the study that really told me how that $1.1 million was going to be generated. I think it was all based upon duplicate personnel, but it doesn't come out and tie those two items together. Moving into the real estate section, the study talks about the real estate that you own and the real estate that Mesa Water owns, and it indicates that you've got three properties, this 19th Street property, the Pottery Building, which you, in the study, it says during the process of negotiating to buy, and the district yard. But at the time the study was actually released, you had already sold this building.
Yeah.
You had already closed escrow on the other building. So those facts are just incorrect in coming up with what real estate savings may be. On Mesa Water's facilities, they mentioned that they have a combined headquarters and maintenance yard just around the corner on Placentia. I found it interesting that, was pointed out to me, that in May of this year, Mesa Water Board did have a closed session to talk about acquiring a property right next door to them that's available. And so it seems odd to me that about the same time they're commissioning this study to be done and looking at consolidating real estate holdings, they're looking at to potentially add additional property. A little odd. So in looking at the properties for a combined agency, they do discuss, the study discusses eliminating the district's headquarters and eliminating the district's yard, and they believe that the basis for that would be their existing facility is more than they need, and there's enough room to be able to absorb the personnel from this location, and they talk about contracting out the sewer cleaning function, and so there may not be a need for all of the equipment that you've got at the yard, and so everything could just be moved over to the Placentia, or over to their existing headquarters. They identified a one-time savings of $2.6 million in eliminating the excess real estate. One of the things that's not brought up in the study is that the, they talk about free funds, wastewater fund, solid waste fund, and the water fund. The wastewater fund, as it's presented in the study, is really three funds, but they only talk about it as being just the wastewater fund. It consists of the wastewater fund, the facilities revolving fund, and your asset management fund. But the study uses just your financial statements to get that information, and those three funds are consolidated in your financial statements into a single presentation. So that part is just a little bit misleading as well. When you had acquired the district yard, 79% of the funds that you used- To acquire the district yard were restricted funds. They came from the facilities revolving fund. And so when you, if in a consolidated agency, the district yard goes away, 79% of the proceeds of that district yard, you need to go back and assume that restricted nature.
Right.
And so they're not available to the rate payers. This study says that 100% of the proceeds would be available to the rate payers. And just following that math through, the study says, for the district yard, $1.5 million would be the market value of the district yard today, and so if 79, if you've got $1.5 million, 79% of that is restricted, that really means, so instead of the $1.5 million that the study shows that would be available to the rate payers, there were only $350,000 that would be available to the rate payers using those sections. The last, the next area the study talks about is financial management, and they have a section that talks about financial management reserves, and it discusses the strength of both of the individual organizations, and again, the study reiterates that Mesa Water has received AAA ratings from Standard and Porches Fitch, and that, it makes the comment that CMSD is currently unrated, and so that is just a little bit misleading as well. Yes, Mesa Water does have a AAA rating on its two bond issues. You have no reason to be rated, because you don't have any debt. That's right.
Funny how that works.
It's funny how that works.
The, there's a section in the report called an overview of your existing financial position, and this whole, this entire section is misleading and problematic in that it uses data from June 30, 2015, and so it's old data, it's outdated information. The three funds that I had mentioned, the wastewater fund, facilities revolving fund, and asset management fund, are all grouped together in the study and doesn't take into account the specific purposes that each of those funds are used for. The study calculates one-time savings, and those one-time savings are 9.7 million to the, I'm sorry, are $15 million to the, go back there. Those one-time savings are $9.7 million to the wastewater fund. The way that they calculated their, our savings is they used this concept of- Cash equal to 600 days of operations, which is a Mesa Water goal, and so they took a Mesa Water goal, and they overlaid that, another agency's goal, on top of your cash situation to come up with what the cash savings would be by consolidating. So when they look at the wastewater fund, remember I said that there's three funds that are included in that? So they look at total cash of the wastewater fund, and they're coming up with $15.2 million, which is the sum of those three funds. They really need to focus, when we talk just about wastewater, really need to focus on just the wastewater fund. The wastewater fund's cash is $6.5 million at June 30, 2016, much more recent numbers, and that $6.5 million actually includes reserves and designations that you've identified within wastewater. If that, if that methodology of 600 days of operations, having cash equal to 600 days of operations, and- Anything above that is excess cash, and that's where they're calculating their savings from, is anything above 600 days of operations. If we use that same methodology and said, okay, well, that was reasonable, and if we applied it to your real cash balance, not this excessive cash balance, the actual savings would only be about $1.8 million, not the 9.7 million that the wastewater fund, the report identifies. The fallacy in all that is they say there's $9.7 million of cash that can be saved in the wastewater fund. That's more than you have in the wastewater fund in cash. You only have $6 million in cash, so how can you save $9.7 million in cash when you only got $6 million in the bank? Doesn't make a lot of sense. On an annual basis, they say that the wastewater fund can save about $1 million a year going forward annually. The way that they calculated that is they said that in looking at your, you've always kind of funded your CIP projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, you've set aside dollars to do that, you've included it in your annual rates, but in reality, you should probably go out and bond for that. And so if you went out and you issued debt, then there would be a debt coverage requirement that would be required, and if you issued debt, and if the debt coverage requirement was this amount, then based upon, based upon this bogus cash number that they're referring to, you would have about $1 million of savings each year. It makes, it doesn't make a lot of sense. The interesting thing there is there's no basis in that for their assumption that you should go out and bond for that. This district's been in existence for 72 years, and you've never gotten into debt to do anything you wanted to do, why would you go into debt to do that now? So just in closing, a lot of the one-time savings, the annual savings, as through some of the issues that I've pointed out, I do believe is flawed. I don't believe that the results, as they're presented in the study, can be relied upon or should be relied upon to make informed decisions on whether two agencies should be consolidated. And furthermore, I understand that today was going to be voted on an advisory measure to place on the November ballot, and within that advisory major uses the results of this study and dollar amounts within this study, and so it seems to me that it would be very inappropriate to deceive the citizenry by putting these incorrect numbers on a ballot measure and ask them to give you advice as to combining two districts when the facts that the citizenry were given were flawed. So with that, I'm going to leave any questions being asked.
You know the shame in all of this, Mark, is there's one, there's not enough people in this room to hear what you just said, but we'll address that a little bit later, I think.
Like I said, the report by Mark is outstanding, and he put all that in writing, and my suggestion is put a cover letter from you, Mr. President, and just send that out. It explains everything in that.
I think we'll need some cooperation from, from the fourth media, fourth estate, rather.
You'll be hearing from our attorney, and we're going to, while in the conjunction.
Couple of questions.
I think you ought to let them dig the hole a little deeper. You know, they did pass the wording changes here, but they can still change them, and they will change them. Yeah, based on Mark's analysis, if they believe it, they'll change them. I think our opportunity is, you know, to go after them in court, you know, once they, once this thing is approved by whoever asked to approve it, and time's run out.
It's an advisory-
Then you go in there-
It's an advisory ballot measure, it's not, it holds, it holds nothing other than public opinion.
Then you go in there, and you take the $15.6 million, the $6.50, the $2.7, and whatnot, you know, and then what's left is, shall the sanitary district and Costa Mesa district pursue consolidation? You know, basically, all the rest of it would be gone, and then, you know.
Director, do you actually have the ballot wording in front of you?
Yeah, yeah.
It was passed today at the special meeting of Mesa Water.
Okay, so then-
Can you read that?
If it's inaccurate, then that would be something-
Well, let me read, can I read it?
Yes, please.
What they passed tonight, and they did some wordsmithing at the meeting, but they still are interested in wordsmithing as needed. So the measure, measures whatever, advisory measure seeking public input regarding the potential consolidation of Mesa Water District and the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, and then the measure will say, shall the Mesa Water District and the Costa Mesa Sanitary District pursue consolidation if it could result in a one-time savings of up to $15.6 million, which equates to $650 per rate payer, annual savings of as much as, and annual savings of as much as $2.7, which includes wastewater reductions of up to 28% as identified in the Optimal Government Structure Study prepared by Arcadis U.S. Inc. That, that's basically, when I left the meeting, they had done a little wordsmithing to what their, what their legal counsel had presented.
Is that not factual information, right?
Not according to Mark.
That's what Mark said.
We've got a lot of weasel words in there, up to, and you know, hopefully-
If it could-
They're trying to get this in front of the public, like, well, we said up to or could be, we didn't say it would be, even though we knew it would even get close.
Well, the report itself does a lot of weasel things, after they say, after they say the $15.6 million is $6.50, it's, well, maybe they would spend it on, you know, CIP, construction programs and other things, you know, so there, it's amazing.
There is an opportunity to challenge something if it's clearly misleading.
Well, that's what I was wanting, that was my question.
The court knows that.
They obviously put enough words in there, could, should, maybe, possibly, you know, so they wouldn't, so a challenge would maybe not be successful, but, you know, we'll have to take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, so if it's challengeable, you know, then they would just take, the judge would just take, you know, whole sentences out, and basically, it would just be one sentence left.
Shall they consolidate? Mark, couple of quick questions. You said that Mesa Water's bonds have a AAA rating. Did you mention what Mesa Water's bond, or what their rating is?
Usually the rating agencies don't rate the actual individual cities, that would be very rare, or special districts, that would be very rare. I looked up both Fitch's rating and Standard and Porches rating, and they rate the bonds, they don't rate-
They're not rating the agencies, okay, I wondered about that.
If I may, can I just say something?
Sure.
I pulled a copy of the rating agencies. Both the rating agencies who rated the bonds, these were 2009 and 2010 ratings.
Right.
So they're very old now, and so they're saying that when they rated them, that it's part of their assumptions when they did the rating was that they would not be issuing more debt. So they're working really hard to get these great ratings when the analysts doing the bond ratings specifically say in the document that they're- bond ratings specifically say in the document that they're, it's anticipated that they're not going to bond anymore. So I might find that a need to really-
Tagging onto that, 2014, Fitch reaffirmed that AAA rating.
That they weren't gonna bond anymore.
So let me-
Go ahead, if you found it.
It says, right here, "The upgrade reflects the Mesa Consolidated Water District's very strong financial performance through the recession and western regional drought, board approval of a five-year rate package designated to increase its healthy liquidity level," designated to help, you know, put money in the bank, "healthy liquidity levels to a very robust level." So they're going from healthy to robust in their liquidity. And it says, "And greater certainty regarding the scope and the cost of capital improvement projects." Says debt levels are low, and the district has no further issuance plans after the current sale. So they're working very hard for something that they've told the rating agencies they're not anticipating needing.
So what I was gonna tell, I, I was told that 2013, they had done a study and they were looking at some future, I guess, CIP or replacements or some, something, and they were looking at a $220 million proposed debt that was coming up for, to keep them from being on cost, to prevent them from being on TV like the city valet is every other day. They don't have $220 million. So wouldn't they be probably going to bond to do that work?
Sure, absolutely.
And, and wouldn't, wouldn't getting the funds from our district, the 15 million dollars and the 9 million dollars, wouldn't that help their bond rating as they go forward with that?
No, because each, each, even though they're rated, you're talking about rating Mesa Water, and each of those funds are separate and distinct and cannot be used to fund or sustain another activity. So this is-
No, I'm not talking about those bonds. If they decide to go to a new bond-
Right.
Wouldn't having a higher financial status or fi, a, they're gonna approve a robust, robust before they will a healthy.
I understand what I said.
Okay.
Because those are separate and distinct businesses, so like a city can have a redevelopment agency, which they don't have anymore.
Correct.
And they can have bonds rated for one thing, and it doesn't impact the city's, if you say that is-
The city's status?
You'd rather explain it differently. So that you can't, you can't say, oh yeah, we've got all this money in the sewer fund, and we're gonna issue these bonds over here in the water fund, and they're gonna be AAA rated because the sewers got all this money. Because you cannot use the funds in the sewer fund to pay for anything in the water fund.
Okay. Yeah, that's sort of kind of what I was-
It's like three different businesses, and they don't-
Got it.
-connect, is that a good way to say it?
There has to be, is this about the bonds, you guys?
No, not about the bonds.
Okay, let me finish mine, and then I'll come back to him, and then you, okay.
This is from a board meeting in 2013, where they show what their needs are to replace infrastructure.
That's, that's the one I haven't seen.
And even, this one right here, it goes from 97 to, right where this first red line is, is 2017 maybe, or 27. So you see how it's flat? They're not doing any infrastructure replacement.
And then it jumps way up.
So then they're gonna bond and get with it. And it's okay, you know, you can do that, 'cause water spilling in the street's okay. Sewer spilling in the street's not so good. But water spilling in the street-
I don't know, water in the streets in a drought isn't so good either.
Anyway, so-
That's from the master plan.
Yeah. All more quick questions than all that are, than what are, just two, two things. The $650 a year that everybody's gonna get, it's already hit social media, and some of our favorite people in the social media arena have already promised the voters that they're all gonna get $650. When did that, did that come out just with the study, or was that talked about prior to the study?
I think it's included, that's included in the study.
Because this person on social media had put it out before the study was even released. And he's not a member of the Mesa Water Board that I thought, yeah, I'm positive of it, 'cause I read it.
'Cause I watched, I told the board, and they said, you're full of BS.
Well, you might be, but I'm not. The, the other, the, the other question I had, you mentioned early in your report about the service area, and I wholeheartedly agree with you that the other people, or the other agencies with status in this game aren't, aren't even included. And I really, it really hit me when I was looking through the report, and I looked at the map on page 20 of 55 that shows the service area. There's a huge chunk of the east side of Costa Mesa that isn't in Mesa Waters' purview. I assume that's all Irvine Ranch Water District, is that right?
Yeah, it used to be Santa Ana Heights.
Used to be Santa Ana Heights Water District, thank you. My dad worked, our dads worked for Santa Ana, didn't they, Art? So, I, that's, I mean, that's like a big chunk. Did they-
We pointed that out to one of our-
I, I know we did. My question is, in anywhere, I didn't see anywhere in that report any mention of Irvine Ranch Water District.
No, I did not see that.
Okay.
That's strange.
I just have two questions. You know, with them putting this in for the vote, is there a deadline that they have to put it in? What is that, you know, that-
August 12.
And if we have, if we don't agree with it, do we have a deadline?
August 12 is the last deadline for any responses to be submitted.
I think once they put it in there, you know, then, then you have a certain period of time to, you know, to respond.
You do, and all response-
Certain period of time to object, and then go, then there's a certain period of time when they have to go before the judge, and if it's like candidates, it's just one judge.
Yeah.
So the lawyer gets up and speaks for them, and a lawyer gets up and speaks for us, and the judge said, it's fine the way it is, or you take this, this sentence out, or this, all this stuff out. Is, is it like, you know, candidates?
Yes, it's same process, yeah.
Okay, so I've been to those, listened to them when Worthington-
There's deadlines for statements and rebuttal, and then deadlines to bring a court action.
So if we have a rebuttal, then we need to exercise that assistance.
Oh, it's outside.
And I don't know what the, what that is right now, I don't know the deadline.
August 12.
And it's done, they have their, their ballot statement already. This is, this was so prepared for months. This, this, they had it polished and ready to go. They were, this was, you know, bypassing the liaison committee and-
It was done before my initial call on April 21st, that's what, yeah, well, good. Jim, you had, did you run across any reference to the $6 million unfunded retirement obligations that they have?
No, no, there's no, no talk about the liabilities or anything like that.
I mean, that's what I under, that's what I heard, that they owed, but I guess it would show up somewhere, though, you know?
It's gotta be on their financial statements, kind of what their unfunded liability is.
And their financial statements, again, as Mike's saying, is, you know, a year old, you know, that we can only pull the information. I actually have a copy of their unfunded deed here. But again, it's a year old, they could've made a substantial payment towards it, maybe not in terms of, but, I mean. No, then I'll give it to them.
Well, when I went tonight, I asked them about how the consultant came up with the 9 million and the 3 million or whatever, you know, the wastewater fund and the other fund. And Mesa, Mesa basically is willing to give a million, so I said, you've got $40 million in reserves, you know, according to your financial statements. And that's what one of their staff members told me. So 40 million in reserve, and you're willing to give up 1 million. What is that 40 million? You know, is it, is it CIP, is it liquidity, is it?
I can tell you what that is. They have it in their financial statements as well.
They may nor-
Well, I just asked them, and none of them, and so I, I told them, I said, you can either tell me in person, or I'll do a public records request to get it. And they kind of smiled, but, you know, that's all due, unless, unless you can tell me.
I can tell you-
I still wanna do it.
Again, we're, we're all using the same data, you know, it's a year old, and it is, you know, whatever they say it is. But according to their note to the financial statements, it says that the district's board of directors have designated certain reserves to ensure that the district complies and has sufficient funding available to meet operations, non-operating capital and debt obligations. These balances are as follows for June 30th, 2015. So they have $10 million for capital replacement. They have $1,554,120 for administrative and general, I don't know what that is. They have $11,189,665 for catastrophe. They have $9,312,179 for operating. They have $4,662,360 for rate stabilization. And then they have their customer deposits and developer deposits at over 2.7 million, which those, you know, are not, those are legally obligated funds.
Right.
So, so I don't know what, you know, I, I get the catastrophe, you know, because we have, you know, money set aside for that, but administrative and general?
It's to remodel their headquarters.
Okay.
That's, that's what I've, in total.
But that comes up for a total of $39,445,000.
Did you mention emergency during?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's what they're calling catastrophe. So they have capital-
No, not capacity, but catastrophe.
Yes.
Well, that's what I asked them for tonight, you know.
So what's our game plan? Are we gonna-
Well, let's, let me open it for, for public comment, and then we'll, do you mind coming back to that?
Can we ask some questions before you go to public comment?
Absolutely. If you have some go.
Mark, did it include the area we're serving Newport Beach in the co-terminus boundaries?
Yeah, what, what they did is, is the area of the new entity will be, water will be covered by Mesa Waters' existing area, and trash and sewer will be covered by CMSD's existing area. And then those two areas overlaid on top of one another will be the area that will be covered by the new entity. Is that my point, is that we just don't serve areas that are not exactly within our boundaries? Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Unincorporated.
That's not covered, then? No, it's in, it's included. We would continue, uh- Trash and sewer for the, or sewer for the areas that are in Newport Beach, we would continue to do, but they would not provide water to those areas that- I'm just saying the two lines, if they try and show how the co-terminus-
The two areas are, doesn't actually represent that area that we would serve that's not part of our boundaries. It's not as totally as consistent in co-terminus with that new background.
Correct.
Not speaking for anyone but myself, I'm sorry, I just wanna, while we're talking about the overlay. If I was doing an optimum government study, I think I would involve all the governments, because if I wanna be optimum, wouldn't I give the sewer lines to the water district that has water there? Because I wanna be optimum.
That's kind of what I was saying earlier, why they didn't include stakeholders all.
And would I give the trash to the, the area that has the trash?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I find that not very optimal.
Great. Alan?
And then they indicate, they don't exactly say in the report, they're kind of implied they have this extra space, they can absorb all the people here, so they just have the extra space in their headquarters?
Right, they do say-
They never make the statement, we have the space.
Because that might be, maybe we have too much space or something. We can, we can absorb everybody. They don't exactly say that, but the implication is, they can just absorb everybody here at this building and their existing facilities.
Correct. But why do they need to buy the property next door?
Yeah, without exactly saying that. I mean, it's just, they don't ever make that statement, but it's like, otherwise, how could you absorb everybody?
When they do the, when they do the combined, combination, they're within three or four people. They assume that very minimal number of people lose their job.
Four plus five board members.
Yeah.
Gee, which five board members would that be?
Well, and also, it would be, assuming that it would be our staff that would go probably, because they're all unionized, and we're not unionized, so we're at will, we can be let go. And it doesn't matter, say, the general manager there makes more than $100,000 than our general manager, it's the same, that, you know.
Well, he should get an increase if he-
Actually, I think they have three employees that make more than our, four employees that make more than our general manager. Sorry, Scott, I had to throw that out there. Arlene, do it. Well, wait, wait a minute, Arlene. Alan was still going.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
And they also indicate, they seem to indicate that their president engineering could just take over all of our engineering too, and they seem to suggest that our district engineer would not be needing anymore. But I guess I'm referring this to you, but financially, but to Rob, that it's my understanding that a water engineer is not the same as a sewer engineer. Sewer engineer has to conversate with SSMDs and all of its other stuff, and they just make a big assumption that one engineer is as good as another engineer, and he'll just do the sewer line. And they don't exactly address it, it's just glossed over.
That's true.
Well, no, it's not.
Is it, is it true that a water engineer would not exactly be doing sewer plants?
Absolutely. There's not, nobody over there knows anything about our system, or knows, I've heard one guy over there say, he's done sewer, but nobody over there could do anything with our system. They have no idea what he did.
Well, you happen to know if they have a permitted permit? Well, why are you just, you're meeting?
No, they-
I think we're ignoring it.
What do you mean, a permit? When somebody does a project?
Yeah. Like, we were doing plans, is your permit, do they all have a permit, or are they, you're meeting?
No, they issue a permit.
Yeah.
Those are all my questions.
Thanks, thanks, Alan.
Mark, I just was wondering, do you indicate, or do you have, touch upon the part of unincorporated areas that they might have?
No, I just mentioned that, that the other stakeholders that are within the whole sphere that are not, are not affected.
So in other words, nothing has come out about the unincorporated areas? Like Santa Ana Heights, or some parts that are not Newport, but really unincorporated?
Right, no.
Well, they don't service that area.
The study ignores, the study ignores coming up with the true optimal sphere of influence that this new entity would, would govern.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like this, it sounds like this study is just enough to get it on the ballot and make these, could we maybe possibly save this money? And then LAFCO will do the real study about-
Of course.
If it goes that far.
Of course.
And this is just enough of a study that nobody's gonna challenge, that gets them on the ballot and makes them, lets them make statements like, possibly we'll save some money.
And makes us look bad.
It's a feel-good kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
For LAFCO, which means nothing to LAFCO.
I just have an off-the-wall question, 'cause you reminded us about emails. In a public's record request, can you ask for their emails regarding the subject?
Yes, I think you can.
Because I think that might be important, if you go back like six months or a year and ask for their emails regarding this. I thought-
It might be very interesting to know how long they've been pondering this and figuring this plan, because this did not come together in a short timeframe. And you have a mechanism, that liaison committee, where you're supposed to, in order to good government, work these issues out, and it wasn't used.
According to Director Timianka, they've been talking about it for, for years, and one of our former directors said that he brought it up in 2011. I don't remember that ever coming up in any of our discussions since I've been on this board.
I think what he was referring to is more shared services.
Exactly.
Nothing but, it was more a shared service.
Exactly. And you just pointed out something that everybody seemed, at least on their side, keeps ignoring. We have four ti, four times a year, we meet, three agencies meet, City of Costa Mesa, Mesa Water, and us, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but-
It's never been on the agenda.
Ever since I was elected to the board the second time, I've never, it's never come up on any of their agendas.
No.
And then it comes up out of the, out of the clear blue on a phone call from Mr. Dwayne to me about, we don't want it, we don't want this to be a, I don't, whatever he said, and now all of a sudden, here it is. Huh?
Ambush?
He didn't say ambush, but I, I knew what he was talking about.
He used LAFCO terms.
And don't we have a liaison committee coming up September?
That'll be a fun one.
Well, can I, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I went to the first meeting where, you know, and addressed that one, so I've been to three of the meetings. In the first, in the first meeting, Dr. Buckmiller asked the assistant general manager, I forget his name, when was the board involved in the concept of the RFP? And I'll have to get back to you. And he said, so then Buckmiller said, was the board involved in, you know, in the, in the construction or where the, the RFP was going to be put out? Well, I'll have to get back to you. He said, the third thing he said was, was, basically implying that, you know, he, as a board member, I guess I trust him the most now, had never heard of this thing. So I went up to this for afterwards, and he said, because I had, I had put in a public records request asking, when was this publicly, um-
Discussed.
Discussed. And so an hour later, Sean Delain calls me and said, you know, Bob, I'd like you to withdraw that public records request. I said, Sean, you're gonna just move too fast with this. He said, what I would request is that you, you put this off thinking, you know, they'd put it off sometime in the future. I think they waited a week or two.
A week.
Uh, so he said, okay, so I, so I sent, I sent in a, a, I rescinded my public records request. So then, uh, in the, in the last meeting, Schoenberger, John Andrew, finally showed up, and he said, the board directed me to do this. You know, we can't find any place where, where it was ever discussed, um, in, in public. Um, so basically, you know, certain board members probably did have a conversation with him, um, but it, but it's never been, you know, and, and, and they keep, everything they do is transparency, it's, you know, it's transparent. Um, you know, this was conceived, you know, behind closed doors someplace, by a group of their board members. Uh, I can tell you probably which three, and Paul, and that's when they directed him to do this. Never has it been publicly noticed that they were thinking about it. Nor has they, have they talked about it with the liaison committee.
I can't think of any conceivable closed session this could have come under.
And it wasn't in?
How could it be? How could it be a closed session either?
You know, to do that.
Wasn't even in the minutes.
Wendy, before I, I'm gonna give it to you in just a second, but I just wanted to throw out, tagging on to what Bob has said, um, you know, Dwayne made the call to me and said that they were gonna do this, and.
Hostile takeover.
No, that, he didn't use that word either. But when he called me, he said, you know, we, will you guys go along with this? And I said, first of all, I'm, I'm not about to commit my board as, as president to any expense like this. I said, we need to discuss it in our pro, our process, which meant probably taking it to a study session and then at a board meeting. That's thirty days minimum. So now we're taking a bunch of flack over the fact that, oh, Costa Mesa Sanitary District delayed their first response over thirty days. Well, in, in the spirit of transparency, we needed to discuss it in our setting and not off the cuff. I mean, Scott and I talked probably twenty minutes at, that long after I received the phone call, so.
When you could speak again?
I was speaking pretty good after you called me, but all of this stuff just keeps multiplying, you know? Wendy, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Um, no, this is the agenda for tonight at their board meeting, and it says, prior board action discussion, following the direction from, provided to staff by the Mesa Water District Board of Directors, board at April eighteenth, six, two thousand and sixteen, workshop, um, couldn't find a workshop that was agendized or noticed, um. This item was further discussed at the executive committee meetings, um, on April twenty-sixth and May twentieth and June seventh. We couldn't find minutes for those. And the minutes for the April eighteenth meeting don't have anything on it, and since they don't, you know, they're not very transparent because they don't record any of their board meetings, and their minutes are very, you know.
So tonight's, tonight's agenda referred to an April eighteenth meeting, and there's nothing in the minutes of the April eighteenth.
It says a workshop, but there's no workshop. We looked on the board, and there's no workshop identified, and there was a board meeting on the eighteenth, but it doesn't have anything, and they don't give, you know, their minutes are, you know, they can, the minutes, you know, the actions are motions and actions with, you know, no more than three lines, you know, they're not verbatim, they're not even.
Does a workshop equate to a study session?
It should be, it should be noticed, and it should be an agenda what the.
All my board members intend to talk about, and then.
Well, we take the position at our study sessions not to have, to take any actions.
You still have, you still have minutes on it, and what are they gonna discuss?
Yeah, but if they're April eighteenth minute meeting, whatever they called it, they took action to direct Schoenberger to go forward with the study.
That, that's what they're saying now.
That's what, that's what I, exactly.
That's what they're saying.
We have no record of that.
It sure seems to me that.
Something wrong there.
It should be in the agenda or the minutes.
We violated the Brown Act, big time.
Yeah. Sure looks that way.
This is a significant action that would have been taken, should be in the agenda or in the.
Staff has tried to look, but we have not been able to find anything, and because everything is so vague, or it's not recorded, or which, I mean, they don't record anything, so it's difficult to.
They don't even do this? They don't record, voice record their meetings?
It should be on the agenda, should be talked about, and it's, it's not listed.
Correct.
That's, that's where they're violation of the Brown Act.
April what?
Open records request.
April what?
Eighteen.
It's like a Monday.
Yeah.
Staff will spend more time looking for the, the documentation, but because this just came out yesterday, and we just have, but we.
That's fine.
We're both trying and.
Okay, um, any other discussion? I'm gonna open it up for Jim.
But, you know, in the meantime, we've gotta load our gun and get some positive information out in the, in media about the situation with us, and, uh, you know, I, once again, I think we, you know, I don't wanna get down the dirt and roll around with them, but.
Don't need to.
But we, you know, we've gotta at least educate the, the people as to what, where it went down.
Yeah, and I think in our, our next agenda item, we'll, we'll talk about that more, Scott. Um, there's been some thought to an ad hoc committee to work, a board ad hoc committee to work on this. If you wanna discuss that in the next item, or do we wanna talk about that now?
Uh, we can talk about it now, um, the, well, I think you heard from Director Fairman, what, what action do you wanna take from, from this? I mean, your, your response, uh, how, what kind of community outreach do you want to perform? Uh, so, uh, suggestion is, um, form an ad hoc committee with two, two board members that commute with, um, staff, um, as well with, um, things that you should hire to, um, enhance our public relations.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so before we take that action, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Uh, Mr. Mosher, I know you have listed number twenty-four to speak. It's not my car, my car's too old to have one of those.
Our, our security guards, there's nobody so long, so.
Okay.
What's that?
I said, we seem to hear one.
Yeah.
No, it's not a long one.
Thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher, and I, I'm a little less organized than I normally would be, because as Secretary Gruden knows, uh, at three-thirty this afternoon, I was starting to read your agenda packet, and then I realized online that the Mesa Water District was holding a meeting at four o'clock, and coming here by bicycle is a little hard between three-thirty and four to get to that meeting. Um, on, on Tuesday evening, I spoke to the Newport Beach City Council about the difficulty it is for government agencies to secure trust from the public in what they do, and even greater difficulty of maintaining trust in that. And I have to say, I, I really try to keep an open mind, and I don't know who to trust. I don't know if I should trust what I heard made of Mesa Office. Mesa Water Board meeting a few minutes ago, or this board meeting. Uh, but my initial reaction was and remains that this is primarily a political stunt, that they develop language, which Secretary Gruden just showed you, this is the final language, it was adopted and was going on the ballot in the direction of the Mesa Water District Board. And it seems a stunt to me, because it's, truncating the language a little bit, it, I, as a voter in being asked, shall the two districts pursue consolidation if it will reduce my rate by twenty-eight percent? I think it's pretty obvious, if I'm an honest voter, and I'm gonna vote yes on that.
Yeah.
And so it makes me wonder why, why it would be having election, it makes me even wonder more why, uh, they're planning to spend a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars on this, which will be the cost of the election, sixty-seven thousand dollars, and they're planning to have four public outreach, um, engagements, mailings, uh, at a cost of twenty-one thousand dollars each, and I, I, as a voter or ratepayer, would be wondering, since they can't advocate for the measure, they can only educate me why I would need to be educated four times about the same measure, I would think I would pretty much get it on the first go. However, the, the agenda topic right now is the, is the report, and that also strikes me as a political stunt. I was planning to read this before I realized I had to take the bike ride over to Los Angeles. I, I look on page twenty-six of this, I believe it is, page twenty-six of their study, and it shows me that the relative, if they, page number, it shows me the relative sizes of the agency, page twenty-six.
Yeah.
And the page before that, looking at that, we, we see that the water, Mesa Water is by far the dominant organization, they seem to have a much bigger budget in terms of revenue and expense, it's like three to one, and some categories even more than that. But then I will look at their, their final line, which is page thirty-six, where the savings are gonna be, and the savings are all in the little organization. So one gets the impression that the directors over at Mesa Water woke up one morning and decided they were gonna be white knights of, of Orange County, and figure out how to impose savings on Costa Mesa Sanitary District, and it was their duty as good citizens to make the Costa Mesa Sanitary District work. Um, so I haven't had time actually to read all the details of this and don't understand what's in it. I, I would be really skeptical if removing duplicate jobs does a big savings, because if, if you have two jobs with the same description and both people are fully employed, you're still gonna need two people after you consolidate. And if you actually need fewer people, it means some of those people are sitting around spending most of the day with nothing to do, and so they can do the job of the other person. But then the, the bottom line, to me, as a skeptic about everybody, there's usually some truth a little bit in everything, so the report is suggesting that there are gross inefficiencies somewhere, and so perhaps this board, whether there's a consolidation or not, should be doing some soul searching about whether, whether the employees are being utilized as efficiently as they can. But, but the idea of the one agency thinking they can make the other one work better just seems to me like a stunt, and the election, I think most people will see this, that why, why would you ask for something where there's no answer but yes?
Exactly. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask? Can I have an answer that's not binding on anybody?
It, it has no.
Doesn't matter what you say.
Has no weight at all. Go ahead.
Can I ask Mr. Mosher something? Mr. Mosher, you used the word white knight, were you using that as a hero, or in the hostile takeover term sense, white knight, black knight, poison pill? It could work either way in, in what you said, so I'm just wondering which reference you were making?
I'm gonna think it through.
Okay. White knight might work in the hostile takeover setting.
I have a degree in political science and not in English literature, so I don't know what the hell you're talking about.
There's a whole, there's a whole language to hostile takeovers.
Alan, I have a question for you, you know, um, can Mesa Water pay for four, four meetings? If, it seems like they're not impartial, it seems like they're, you know, can they pay for outreach for four meetings?
That, that is exactly, you hit, you know, Mr. Mosher, it's all, you've all hit it on the road. It's asked, needs to be impartial, it needs to be informational. Once you're in an election mode, then you can't advocate, you can't, let me correct, you can't use public money to advocate. This board can take the position, and can adopt a resolution saying they're in favor or opposed, but you can't use public money to advocate. And it's not just vote for Mesa consolidated, the court looks at the tenor, timing, and style of the communication and its relation to the election to determine if that was advocacy or if it was truly an attempt to be fair and impartial.
All they're gonna do is at these four meetings is bring up the Arcata study and say, here's the study, they're gonna have a PowerPoint of all the Arcata, that's all they're gonna do.
I don't think it's four meetings, I think it's four mailings.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, mailings. Oh, Catholicism meetings.
And they're paying for that out of Mesa, you know, our citizens' money.
Out of our money, we're a consumer of Mesa Water.
I know, I know, that's what I mean. You mean, is that legal for them to do that?
I think that's part of what the ad hoc.
It's gotta be fair and impartial, and then we'll, we'll see what it says, but I mean, there's a question, how could you do four?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, is that across the line? Haven't you already produced the information? And if you missed something in the study, that wonderful study, is, is maybe one mailing corrects it, but, you know, three more mailings after that? That's starting to sound like a, like you say, like a voting material, like they're campaigning, using public money.
Okay, I think that's important. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments portion of the discussion.
I'd go to number twenty-five.
Well, let's, I, I think if we're gonna talk about an ad hoc committee, I think we need to establish it under this.
I would like to see, if we're gonna have an ad hoc committee, that's only two members, I'd like to see Bob and yourself on that, myself, or Jim and Bob, and I could be an alternate.
I'd, I'd like to be involved, obviously, since I'm getting the communications.
Well, I have a time issue because I'm gonna be out of town.
I know, but in the future, you'll be in town.
Yeah.
Because I could be the alternate with, if Bob's gone, if that's acceptable with the board.
Is that, is that all right? Okay, Jim, Arlene, you wanna make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
If it's an ad hoc, we don't need to.
Right, right.
I'm gonna second.
Okay, so the motion is to establish an ad hoc committee to meet with staff and any future consultants that we might use regarding the Mesa Water governance, you know the words.
Optimal governance.
Any, any action, ad hoc committee makes to, to bring back the board to build that direction, or can, you know?
No. You can't, the ad hoc committee really doesn't.
You can't enter into a contract, but ad hoc committee can get a lot of them.
But, but can they give staff directions, proceed with something? Without going back to the board?
No, they'd bring it back to the board.
Because that, I don't agree, because that's gonna delay their response.
What is the, what's the board's preference?
Well, we, we've, we've.
You can delegate that.
Yeah, we can, we've done that with the rap ad hoc committee, we asked staff to go do things, we, I think we're okay doing that.
I was okay.
And if there's something major, we're gonna call a special meeting.
Right.
One district can have special meetings every week to take care of issues, we certainly can.
Scott just wants a clarification.
Yeah.
Two of you can direct him.
Yes.
Yeah.
Tell us, send a response next week? Great, I can do that without going back to the board.
Okay, you all right with that, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
All right, then the motion is to establish an ad hoc committee consisting of myself and Director Ooten, with Director Perry as an alternate, to address the study from Mesa Water in conjunction, again, with staff and any future consultants. I get it? Any other discussion? All of them?
Can, can, I can, I can talk to you on the phone and whatnot?
Yeah.
And do I have to do the closed door thing?
No.
Or the open door thing?
You shouldn't be present at the same time, or, you should, you should give your input at a different time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, then I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Hi.
Posed? That motion carries unanimous, five to zero. Okay, um, then let's move to item number twenty-five. Scott?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President, this is for your consideration, to enter an agreement with Roger Povell, Public Affairs, to, to help us with our public outreach.
Okay. Um, do you wanna give some background on our meeting?
Um.
At the coffee place?
Sure, sure, so, uh, Roger Povell reached out to me and, uh, decided to, um, have a meeting with, with us to discuss our public outreach and how we can better communicate with, with the public. Um, we had that meeting set up with, um, Roger, Mr. Roger Povell and, um, Peter Whittingham from Kurt Pringleson Associates, and Roger and Peter, myself, along with President Schaefer and Vice President Perry met last week, and, uh, we were just talking about, um, how their services could help us with our, our public outreach and, and what methods we can use to better communicate with, with the public, and we thought it'd be beneficial to, um, the organization, if we consider entering a contract with them. we thought it'd be beneficial to the organization if we consider entering a contract with them.
Okay. The agreement, reading through the agreement, there's nothing specific to using them for the Mesa Water.
Well, the agreement you have attached with it is their agreement. What you need to look at is really is the scope of work, because if you, it's within the general manager's purview to sign, I just need your approval to sign it, and what they'll sign is a standard consulting agreement, which district council has already reviewed and approved, so, and they've already signed it. So, it's just a standard agreement. What will be attached is the scope of work, which is in the jazz, which is in the packet. That's what they'll be performing.
Great. And that scope of work is really what we determined it to be. Any questions for staff on that?
I just wanted to comment that I think we need to really move on this right now, and it is extremely important that we get out there to the public and get items in the newspapers and media so they understand and know what we're up against. With that, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Let me open it up for public comment.
Okay.
And before we open it for public comment, something occurred to me. Mark, your report, you've already prepared your report and have copies of it.
I've got that copy. So, I'll make copies.
Can we make sure the reporter has a copy of it?
Sure.
All right, then I'm going to open the item number twenty-five up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Moser, I know you've indicated a desire to speak.
Thank you again, President Schaefer and members of the board. My name is Jim Moser. The reason I put in the card was I thought the item was not very well-attended, because it just said professional consulting services, and I didn't know it was related to the Mesa Water matter or just a general consultant. I'm still a little confused about what it is. And I'm a, I'm sure you will have a different view of this, but as a ratepayer, a little concerned about spending money on the election matter, since to me, the election, it's kind of a sham election, and it doesn't mean anything, no matter which way that people vote. So, you may be concerned about your public impression, but trying to influence an election that doesn't mean anything, I don't think is worth spending a whole lot of money on. And then although I realize I'm partly off the agenda now, on the previous item, I wanted to differ slightly from your esteemed district council, because the Brown Act training that I have had agrees with what Assistant Secretary Schaefer said was an advisory committee. It's fine to have an ad hoc committee that is delegated to do something, provided that committee meets at a notice meeting.
Right.
But if they're going to meet over the telephone at a non-noticed meeting, their role can only be to bring back any issue to the board.
Yeah, and I think council was clear that any communications, if he's out of town, will have to be done later, or won't be by phone, so just so that you know that that's not going to happen.
I think the question is whether you could delegate to the committee the direction to the general managers, and I think it's fine for the committee to do that, but I think you need to at least make a special meeting notice. Nobody, including me, may show up at that meeting, but I think you need to let them know that you're meeting to give direction to somebody.
Very good. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, then I will close the public comment section.
I'd like to make the motion for acceptance of what's been before us.
Okay.
Second?
Discussion. Call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries unanimous, Madam Clerk, five to zero. To agree to the agreement. I guess it's appropriate, Roger, you guys want to say anything at this point?
Really, just like to, if I may, President Schaefer, I'd like to introduce myself.
Oh, Roger, we're, in the spirit of transparency, we record everything, so we're going to...
Forgive me, I know that was... That's why I'm here. Hi, my name is Roger Fabel. I've been in the business for about forty years. I'd like to introduce my colleague from Kirk Pringle and Associates, Peter Whittingham. Together, we discussed this matter, and we thought that we could help the district in terms of getting out appropriate information to the ratepayers, because we felt that there is a lot of misinformation that's out there. And we think that that should always be corrected for a public agency, because you can't let it stay out there without clarifying that and adding, that's our duty. And we've done that a lot, and we've had many clients, and we're very enthusiastic, and we look forward to working with the senior staff and with the board.
Thank you both for putting up with us this evening.
Oh, no, it's good. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. We appreciate it.
Hopefully, we didn't embarrass ourselves, except that my phone just did.
Thank you all.
You're going to do a good job.
Look forward to seeing you guys.
Good seeing you.
Okay, I, just kind of a point of clarification. The agreement was within your purview, the money spent, right?
Yeah, it's my authorization to approve a contract under less than $125,000.
So, why did we have to vote on it?
Well, I just need, I just want a direction from the board.
Yeah, okay.
Give me direction to sign it. I mean, I'm going to sign it, but I just want your board to...
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
And for transparency, too.
That's kind of what I was thinking, Art, as well, is this district, I mean, I don't mean to get on a soapbox, but my gosh, this district has been so much the standard of transparency in this community over any other agency, and I just think we're doing the right thing.
I do, too.
I really do, and thank you, staff. Mark, what you said earlier and what you pointed out was outstanding.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, it really does, I know there's two sides, and I agree with Mr. Moser, there are two sides to everything, but one of our ratepayers came up to me not too long ago and said, you know, he says, I understand this rationale of wanting to combine the agencies, he says, but whenever someone gets married, he says, it's better to have both parties agree to getting married. He says, whatever you do, don't let Mesa take you over. That's what the guy, that's what this ratepayer said, so I think a lot of what you presented to us earlier, and Wendy you as well, and Scott, really is important, and the public needs to know exactly what's going on. I think all five of us feel that way. I don't, you know, so...
And I think we've received other communications from citizens about the same topic.
I think so, too.
I've received a lot on my iPhone.
We read some of the, read some of the community blogs, and there's a lot of people that...
Well, we need to revisit the thing we did a couple of years ago, that survey, and the results of that. Ninety-two percent of the ratepayers are happy as if, you know...
Sure, sure.
And the board's going to be okay if we send out a public records request?
Oh, yeah.
Please.
Can you also ask for the emails? Who do you want to send out? Staff, you want the city council to send out a public records request? And what is it?
All emails pertaining to the governance study.
All agendas. That'd be good. I thought it'd be better if you did.
From the board and the general manager.
Board and staff. Because Ms. Taylor may have some involvement in it as well.
I'll make it.
All emails concerning what?
Well, all emails concerning this, any item with the consolidation. From, can it be from director to manager?
I'll make it very broad. I'll cover all of these. Trust me, trust me to make this broad.
That would be really interesting, you know?
I think it's important for the public to know, too.
Yeah.
Just a comment.
Learned a lot in the last day and a half. We both, Mesa and the sanitary district, have the award for transparency, but like you said, we are so transparent. We couldn't find their Form 700s online. We couldn't find minutes. They don't record their meetings. We couldn't, you know, find documents.
It's... Sounds like you guys overqualified for that certificate.
Yes, I mean, it's amazing how, you know, honest and upfront this board of directors is and holds staff to that standard as well. It's just enlightening.
I think Mr. Moser should be congratulated on what he said about this being a political stunt. I think that's the overwhelming response in the community, that this is a political stunt, so thank you for pointing that out. Okay, let's move back to the regular agenda. We'll go to the general manager's report then. Scott? We can absolutely take a five-minute break if you'd like. Thank you.
Would you run across the street and give me a burger?
Can you go get some burgers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, item number eleven is preliminary, two thousand fifteen, sixteen year-end budget, fourth quarter budget report. Wendy Davis will be in with the report.
Thank you. Wendy?
Thank you. As you can see, this is a preliminary, closed. It is including our salaries, but not including the more than one more register. So, in the solid waste fund, we're estimating savings of about $326,000, and in the wastewater fund, we're estimating a savings of about $236,000. This report includes, even though we haven't received some of the invoices or we intend to carry over, like CIP projects and so forth, they're shown as fully expended here, because we will come back to the board and ask for those carryovers. So, this is kind of what we're anticipating after books are closed. I'd like to point out to the board that the board of directors in adopting the organics program, that was, we talked about this survey before, that the public would like to see us go towards the organics as opposed to cutting the rates and saving this will help with our, you know, reaching our ultimate goal of diversion. So, in this year, we budgeted $600,000 for the organics program, and due to the new facility not being up and running, we haven't paid the higher rates for the organics that were diverted. They've charged us the lower rate throughout the entire year. In fact, I think they just started charging us the higher rate in this fiscal year of July. I think it'll be the first month that we actually pay the higher rate. So, staff sees that we have a substantial savings of about $200,000 from the organics because of the lower rate. I wanted the board to note the tonnage that we saw for the organics program. It's just information, and you'll probably see it at your study session as well. The rest of the savings is just here and there. The special programs, we received a substantial savings in the household hazardous waste, because it's an off-year for the normal program that we do with the county for recycling. And so, that's mostly the remaining portion right there. Then, in the solid waste fund, most of the savings was due to, I guess I want to say, it's kind of due to the CCTV. It's kind of an overall effect that with us out there...
You said solid waste, not wastewater?
I'm sorry, wastewater, no.
Oh, okay.
It's due to the CCTV, that with them out there, our own team cleaning for the first full year, so two teams cleaning for the first full year, and the CCTV going on, we're, you know, repairing and cleaning, and it seems to be not translating into additional costs, because we're doing the repairs as they're coming up, and we're seeing it. So, we're spending like less on the maintenance type of items, because we're repairing the pipes and so forth at the same time. I think what we'll see after a couple of years is that secondary cleaning crew is also going to save us additional money, because I think the costs of, you know, the products and things we use for it are less. So, that's kind of the overall effect. I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Just a thought occurred to me that they're doing a great job. The guys cleaning the lines are doing a great job. I mean, that was a good move. Over the years, and maybe, Rob, you can chip in on this one. Over the years, we've talked about Fairview Developmental Center and the issues they have over there. Is there any way we could offer that service to them? They would have to pay the expense. I mean, I don't want to give them, can we do that or no?
You know, they've already got preliminary plans for development there.
That's why, kind of why I brought it up.
Yeah, I think that probably with the plans, they'll...
I did report that in a previous meeting, that based on discussion with water board members after they had the big sewage fill over there, that they do have a backfill.
Yeah, you did say that.
Apparently, and I did notify the board, or the water board, that they historically have never cleaned that system. So, we basically put the bad guy on their tail. And we did offer them cleaning payback. It was approximately $25,000 for heavy cleaning and all. They declined. Now, they have their own backer. They have the water board on their tail. They should be under the WBR, but as a state agency, they ignored it. So, and we will get them again when they, we did make it a condition in their conditional will serve letter that they have to clean the system. So, we'll get them one way or the other.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Wendy? Good report. Receiving file?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. All right, item twelve?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request for a contribution from the Costa Mesa High School football program. They are requesting a monthly contribution of $1,000 for two stadium banners. Here for your approval, just FYI. I do believe we have approved banners, we approved one banner at Stancia High School and offered $500. I would prefer to approve two, though, so, just FYI.
I have a question. Does this cost include them making a banner for us? Or do we have to provide our own?
Yeah, they make it all, they do all the work. Yeah, we just give them the money, they do everything.
I guess not to be an Eagle alumni, because I know there's a couple Mustang alumni here, but we gave $500 to Estancia for a banner.
Well, they requested one banner, and so, Costa Mesa requested two, so...
Okay, that's fine. My wife's a Mustang, so I better keep my mouth shut.
Well, you know, we'll probably get some mileage out of it, since it's a brand-new facility, and people will be over there, you know...
Do we tell them what's going to go on the banner? Because they're making it, right?
Yeah, it has to be obviously something that meets our purpose, so, you know, like an organic recycling, or recycling some...
Maybe a contingent upon working with the money.
Yes.
Do we probably get credit for the sponsorship of the banner?
Well, our banner will be the credit.
It'll be on both sides, I think, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
Well, no, one's going to be in their, one's going to be in the stadium, one's going to be in their training area?
I believe so, yeah.
Football training area?
I'll move it.
Hold on a second.
The two Mustangs flew right in there, boy. I heard that.
Well, it's initial kickoff.
You know what? They've, I told Kirk Bowermeister yesterday, Mesa's kind of taken the short end of a lot of stuff, facility-wise, and this is, it's a great deal.
Although we do have an Olympic pool, the only one at Costa Mesa.
Yeah, ha, ha, ha.
That's right.
No more. We're doing good.
I think it's a good thing for a first year.
I don't know what the repeat costs are, but I don't know.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion to approve the allocation in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries unanimous, five to zero. Go Mustangs. Did you see the new football coaches at Dustin, by the way?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Byron Miller.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I knew that.
That's not official, but I couldn't help. Okay. Where the heck am I? Number thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is...
Part of this package, you have the generator use agreement with Mesa. Did you see that?
That's just part of the application.
That's part of the application, if they want to, if they want to... Oh, they want... A generator, and then they just tell us that's part of the application.
Oh, it's part of the application. What would they use a generator for?
I don't know. It's just there for that. They want to use a generator, if they want to use more generators, and they fill that application, and they tell us what it's for.
This is the same application.
I know, I know, but I saw it and I read it, and I couldn't find out why, what they're going to use it for.
Didn't they say no?
They're not, yeah, they're not.
It's an option.
It's an option, they're not using generators.
It's two programs we have that if there's a public benefit...
Right, yeah, I just, I saw it here, and I didn't know, there was no explanation.
Their lights go out.
No, Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is unfunded, other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, and Wendy Davis will be in with the report.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to think of when it was. I want to say a year ago, last January, we talked about reserve policies and funding policies, and we came back to the board last July and asked the board to appropriate funds to fund our unfunded liability for OPEB, and I think it was $120,000. So, this is the year that we're doing our actuarial report. We're required to do one for our OPEB every two years, when we belong to the CERBT program. And so, this is the year, and our actuary tells us that with the new liability going on to our books, that this $125 should wipe out our entire liability. So, based on board direction in the past, staff is requesting...
I move for approval.
Before we take a vote, let me open it up for public comments. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? No, I have no cards, so I'll close the public comment.
I move for approval.
Can I say that?
Is that a question for you or not?
Yes.
Wendy, does that mean forever, or is that just for now?
It's the existing unfunded liability. So, what we'll probably do is fund the liability on a ongoing basis every year. So, our payroll, you know, if everything's calculated correctly, we should remain funded on an annual basis, but is that a good way to say it?
Yeah, because the OPEB was not required to be on the books as a liability in the
past. This is the catch-up to get that full liability on the books.
Then it will be written off.
Do we think this will cover all of our liability in the future?
No.
Or it's just an annual contribution that makes sure we're at zero?
Then annually, we make our normal contribution towards it, like paying towards our retirement.
Liability's not going to be that great.
Right, it'll just be our-
Just for that year.
Exactly.
How many agencies, any idea how many agencies in California have been able to do this?
Orange County San Francisco.
Did Orange County Sando?
Really?
Well, we're 25 million left to do.
Okay.
Well, there was, there was, how much was it?
That was a lot.
225.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They paid 125.
I'm sure there's some small agencies that have done it, but-
I think we're very fortunate because we didn't have, we've only had employees for the last, you know, 12, 13 years. That's a benefit. The board was very proactive in having employees self-fund their portion, so that has cut down our portion. We don't have high turnover. We haven't had a lot of retirees, so those all, you know, benefit us in this. So the board's just been very-
And I think overall, this board's very fiscally prudent in doing the things.
Isn't it also true we hardly have any retiree health benefits?
True, we have hardly any retirees, so yes.
This'll save on the annual budget. This'll mean lower payments into the purges in both of these funds.
Right.
So we won't pay at the same rate as what we're used to.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was my understanding of it. Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Okay.
Can I second?
Right. Motion is second to the other discussion, and I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Strategic plan?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just your quarterly update. It's your fourth quarter, which is your first year, and your 2015-20 strategic plan. Just available to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for the general manager? It looks very good. Okay. Receiving file. Thank you, Scott. 15.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to reschedule your August 9 study session to August 16 and to host the meeting at the new facility at 290 Pollerino Avenue. This was discussed at a study session, a July session, and the board directed staff to put this on tonight's meeting. I do want to mention, however, I know President Schaefer, you mentioned earlier that the board generally does not take action at the study session. I do want to tell the board that I will have an action item on this agenda, and that'll be approve a contract, the general contractor, for, to form the CI approval.
Okay, so it's just posted.
Yes.
The fact that that's our new facility poses no issue to anything?
It's just, we just got to make clear that it's at a different location.
And we'll do that here as well.
Yeah, we just got to really make it clear.
Is the meeting at 8:30 or is this 9?
It's 9:30.
9:30. 9:30. Have another meeting scheduled here for eight or whatever.
Um, don't, I don't know.
That would have been special.
That was originally going to be our one-on-one, monthly one-on-one, but we changed it.
Yeah, that's it.
That's not a meeting anymore.
That's, you know, that's probably one of the more important weeks of the year, especially since it stays my birthday. Is it? Oh, this is, we did make sure we posted enough time for everybody to know.
Yes, yes, but I need, I need approval to reschedule the board.
16.
16. I'll move for approval. Second.
Discussion?
You know, I won't be present.
Right.
The way as we talked about.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then our August 9 meeting is changed to, passed unanimously, five to zero. No, I'm correct, sorry. August 16. All right. Really good items. Scott, go ahead, number 16.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is, I'm very excited to present this to the board. This is an idea that was submitted by Joel Ortiz, our wastewater maintenance worker three employee here, and he came up with the idea to ensure or improve the safety of staff and also improve the timeliness to connect backup power to a pump station. But what he suggested is that Adams Pump Station, when there's a power outage, staff has to bring a generator, a power generator on Adams Avenue. What they have to do is block off one of the lanes, which, as you know, the heavy traffic on Adams, that can be extremely dangerous, especially at night. The staff did not like doing that because of that safety issue. What Joel recommended was on the other side of Adams is Calvert Avenue, and he suggested that maybe we can put a portable generator at Calvert Avenue and then connect the, have the connections from the pump station at Adams go through a private property on Calvert onto the right-of-way on Calvert. Fortunately for us, that private property agreed to everything that we said, and we have before you, under the engineer's report, an agreement with that individual. If you approve that agreement, then this project will become fruition, and we think this is a great project. It's going to improve safety and really improve our timeliness to respond to emergencies there. So we recommend approval for $500 for Joel Ortiz.
Move it. Second.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Signaling that we have a motion in a second to approve the $500. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let Joel know, asking unanimous, five to zero. Really, again, good, we've talked about this a lot. This is really, this is really, really cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does he come to us for presentation?
No, we just get him to check.
Believe me, he just wants to check. He doesn't want to see us.
Okay.
No, he loves to see us.
Well, I just thought it was a good lesson.
This'll be a good one on your annual report in December.
Yes.
Maybe, like, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Engineers report. Mr. Hamers.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. Item 17, project status report. Very busy out there. Happy to answer any questions that are-
Any questions for Rob on item 17? Okay.
Thank you. Item 18, council of events. I did sign an agreement to prepare a parcel map to divide a property into two. There will be a little bit of sewer design, so I will follow our accepted protocol, and our alternate district engineer will review the plan.
Okay. Questions for Rob on that one? Thank you.
Item, thank you. Item 19, which is project 310. This is standard procedure for when a project is done. This is the indoor sewer and manhole rehabilitation. You put liners in the sewer, you put liners in the manhole. It's all buttoned up. It looks great.
Move approval.
Second.
Good job. Any, how'd the residents react at all? Did you have any?
We have not had one resident complain at any time over any project.
Wow.
It's amazing that we just knock on their door, and it's so nice. So it's been marvelous over the years that our CIP projects go on everywhere and people don't complain.
Is that in the Mesa Water Report that we didn't have any complaint? I didn't think so. Sorry.
So recommend item 12 and-
Couldn't help but Jimmy. Questions for Rob on that?
Can we make that motion with all three or separately?
I think you can do all three on that one.
Move approval of 1, 2, and 3. Project 310.
Second.
Motion is second for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Good job, Rob.
Yeah, really good. That one's kind of been hanging out there for so long, and now to have it done is really cool, I think.
Yes, yes.
And it's very complicated, too, but you get together nicely. So item 20 is the project that's just reviewed. You have in the board package an agreement signed by Mr. Abara. You have the map and description of the easement area prepared by myself as engineer. We do have a title report that shows Mr. Abara has taken on the property. So you have enough here to enter into the permanent easement agreement, a temporary construction easement agreement, and a payment or compensation to Mr. Abara. So if you approve all that tonight and direct the general manager to continue, then we will prepare the plans and specs for the improvements and then construct those. But first step is to obtain that easement and the agreement which we're talking about.
Move for approval.
Second. Discussion?
Do you have any idea how long it'll take to do the plan and specs?
Not long. It's rather small.
Yeah.
We'll get right to it.
Since the easement, I'm going to put my insurance hat on for a second. Since we now own that easement, our insurance will take care of that, any liability situations that occur on the easement, right?
I would believe so.
You just might want to mention to Mr. Abara, if you have a conversation or if it comes up, that he probably needs to let his homeowner's insurance company know that he's got a public easement there.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a very good point.
Just, it could be a liability issue that could spread to both.
Yeah, I will make that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimous, five to zero.
Thank you for that. I will let Mr. Abara know, and you already let the general manager know.
That's good.
And that concludes the engineer's report.
Thanks, Rob. Mark?
Mr. President and board members, this is your quarterly review of the investment report. This is for the month of June. The portfolio as of June 30 was earning 1.188%. Duration of the portfolio was just under two and a half years. This concludes the fiscal year for the earnings. We were budgeted to earn 0.9%, and for the year, we ended up at 1.131%. So that was good news. During the month of June, we had, two of our investments were called. One home loan, we had purchased, it was a five-year security we purchased in March of 2013. It was called after three and a quarter years. It was earning 1.13%. We also had a Freddie Mac that was a three-year security earning 1.4% called. It was called after three months that we held that security. We did make one purchase this month. We purchased a Fannie Mae, a five-year Fannie Mae earning 1.6%. It's callable in December of this year. And cash balances during the month of June went down significantly with the close of the purchase of the Pollerino building. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
The, the, let's see, the facilities revolving fund, those total way as we do the building and buildings? Is that what that's supposed to be for?
I'm going to transfer the funds, I think, June 30, that was around 790.
Whenever the contractor gets started. Okay. Basically, that'll go to zero.
Move for approval of the report for June 2016.
Second.
Discussion? I'll be curious to see your report after November 8, the end-of-the-year report, to see what happens to everything.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Thank you, Mark. Counselor.
Nothing under attorney's report, Mr. President.
Jim?
I attended the Orange County San Francisco District meeting last night, and a couple things. They retained a broker to represent them in the purchase of a new headquarters building, which is going to be in the neighborhood of $30 million.
Wow.
But they would have, and they're still going to have to tear down the old headquarters building. But they don't have to build it, so that would have been $120 million. So at any rate, this'll, this is going to take a while to come to fruition, but they picked out one property that they're kind of looking at. It's on Greed Avenue, you know, you go down farther, and it's, you know, it's maybe a half a mile from the existing location.
Actually, they're going to relocate from their campus.
Well, no, they'll, they'll keep the, you know, 100 acres.
But the headquarters will be on another site. Wow.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, well, you know, and then they'll fill that building up, you know, the one they, they, they will build there, you know. Actually, they might not, might not even be all office. It could be more oriented to treatment and stuff, so.
OCTA is going to do a flyover lane that then they impose on that corner, the old corner of the property.
Oh, on the 45.
So they're going to take the people that normally turn left to go onto 45 on a flyover lane over the river and onto the freeway.
Really?
And I think it significantly improved Director Schaefer's property.
I was just going to say, what, this is news to me tonight. I'm going to call a real estate agent tomorrow. Seriously?
First a billboard, now a flyover.
Do you know anybody in Fountain Valley you can talk to for me? Come on.
No friends. It's supposed to be Fountain Valley.
In my domain. Maybe they're going to take my property and pay me lots of money.
I'm not sure that's a done deal, but OCTA is talking to the district about doing that.
That's as crazy as that guy that wanted to build the freeway on top of the Santa Ana River. Ross Perot. Anyway.
Probably not a bad idea.
I think it was a good idea.
It's a horrible idea.
No, I thought it was good.
Go ahead, Jim.
We are also opening up negotiations with the unions, which is always a pleasant thing. Actually, their first offer was pretty modest, kind of modest. They did complete the compensation study final results, you know, and that's where they compare all the different, for the same type of agencies, salaries and so forth. So we're, you know, we went through a bunch of presentations on that.
You're bringing an outside negotiator?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Anything else?
I wasn't there last night.
Oh.
I had a better day.
Nothing really, I mean, there were some big numbers. I might add that, you know, I'm the chairman of the National Water Research Institute, and our executive director informed me that he's leaving in a month. And I'll tell you, I mean, trying to find somebody that can fill this slot is going to be-
Has he been there all this time?
No, he's been there about 12 years.
So a lot of scientific knowledge.
But I mean, he, oh.
All scientific.
Yeah.
Is there somebody that can move up?
Huh?
Is there somebody that can move up the ladder?
No.
Wow.
So we're having an emergency meeting next week. Try to find some interim guy.
How do you, how do you post for that job, huh?
Oh, I mean, he wears about 15 hats, and, you know, you've got to really know your stuff. It's all technical.
Well, maybe script guys might-
Well, we're going to talk to them.
Maybe they'll give you something to do in retirement.
I have something to do.
Oh, that's right. I forgot.
That's all I have.[1647.12]
Thanks, Jimmy.
I have six things to do.
I know you do. Art, you want to talk about SARFA?
Okay, Jim and I attended the SARFA meeting. We had to leave early to make this meeting, so I'm not sure what the final results were. But the first thing they kicked off is Jim O'Connor. He's our liaison to Washington. And he just gave us a report that, you know, there's not going to be a budget approved by until the first. They're going to have to, it's going to be like, he's hoping it's going to be in December. Because we're going to have to continue the resolution. And part of that is the money for, for the Army Corps of Engineers, for the project, for the, for all of the projects. And he says that if, depends on who becomes the president, it could affect if it's going to be approved in December, it could be March, based on who the president's going to be. So they don't really know exactly how much money's going to be in the budget for SARFA or for the Army Corps of Engineers. But then they went into, they had some representatives from the Corps there, two, about three or four representatives, and they gave a presentation. And they started off with just showing us a hundred-year flood plain and a five-hundred-year flood plain. This is in the East Garden Grove. And Balsa Chica, in Westminster channels.
Downstream of the dam.
Yeah, downstream of the dam. It's in, you know, it's in Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, Westminster. So all the representatives from those cities were there. That's what you had asked me about, Scott. So he talked about that and showed us the flood plain and they told us about some, their objectives. Their objectives were kind of basic, reduce flood hazards, including risk to the safety and damages to private and public infrastructure. And then reduce flood impacts on the vicinity of the outer Balsa Bay, including flooding along Pacific Coast Highway. So that was part of their objectives. So they listed potential alternatives. And one was take no action. That's always the alternative because the prices are so high. Two, channel improvements, channel improvements with Milesford Park retention area for water. That's still under consideration. And, you know, John wasn't thrilled with it. No, John Collins, who's our chairman now, wasn't that happy.
They're not going to put more water hazards on the golf course.
Yeah, it's going to take up part of the golf courses.
Underneath.
No, it's going to be open.
Open?
It's going to be open.
So they'll take over part of the golf course?
Well, that's if, it's, the study's not going to be completed for a year and a half, a year and a year and a half. So we, nobody knows. They were listening to objections today and then some suggestions.
They drain the lakes, going to go there and look for my golf balls?
They're going to make a big lake.
Yeah, that's right.
Then they had other alternative developments, which included not having Milesford Park in there, but then they had to re-add it again because after discussions with part of their crew. And then they talked about what they can do, different alternatives. They can cement the channels. They can widen the channels. They could have major capital improvements on the channels.
Can they add a river channel?
No, the flood control channels. Okay, but here's the, the cost of this. So that's why they have all, they have five alternatives. If it's just minimal construction improvements, they're asking us two, two hundred and sixty-four million. If it's channel improvements, OCTW channel improvements is one billion four hundred and seventy-four million. And maximum channel improvement is one billion three hundred and seventy-nine million. And then with the retention base in the Milesford Park, it drops down to four hundred and twenty-eight million. So they're considering all these options. And that's why I had to leave. And Jim left right behind me, so I don't know if I was right. Yeah, he was right behind me. So that was almost the end of the discussion. So they were looking for suggestions from the group. We hadn't got the appointment yet, so it was, so it's a pretty expensive project. Pretty expensive on that, but I'm not sure what's going to happen.
Does SARFA have anything to do with it? You know that canal that runs by my house?
No, Orange County flood. That's why we get out of the insurance. Of course, we need to get out of paying insurance.
Well, I tell you what, they, they really widened that flood control. You know, with the one on the side of the road.
Oh, my God. My wife's complaining because her car's dirty all the time. But looking, but looking at the five-hundred-year flood, it looked like part of Costa Mesa, you know, if I really, it could be flooded.
I don't want your car to get dirty, but your lockout's insurance premium.
No, but listen, can we make that public that on my areas in flood? I can sell more flood insurance.
Because they're concerned by, you know, the cost of insurance that these people have to pay in Fountain Valley and it can be.
Well, the right course for me and the two-streaming plan, if they have flood walls, so the water will go up higher.
This has really been a good night for me. Flyovers, dirty cars, come on.
Your, your house will be inundated, but the sewage plant will be saved.
That's me, my report. I thought it was pretty interesting.
That's really, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. I didn't realize it because the budget's not that great.
Yeah.
It's the quarter budget.
I know, of course, but of course, that's a lot of money for the four. Okay, ISDOC, we have the executive committee meeting on the twelfth. Couple of just things. Bill Nelson from CSDA talked a little bit about how the Little Hoover Commission is now making the point to look at special districts, which I'm sure we'll get some feedback on. Phil Anthony brought the new executive director of OCOG to meet with us. And Marnie, I don't, that isn't Marnie's last name. She seemed very, very adept at her new position. She also had made a comment about, OCOG is one of her clients. And I don't remember, do you remember what she said, what she did? She was an consultant. But she's doing some other kind of work and, and she's still doing that work, but still working with OCOG. And Director Fissler kind of laid into her a little bit about, well, how can you have two jobs? And she says, well, OCOG's just one of my customers, I mean, or clients. That's really it, except for the, we won't get to other new business, but election of officers is coming up. And we can see a couple of resolutions tonight for election to the executive committee. We also had a discussion on ISDOC's nonprofit tax status. Somehow somebody figured that we had never been filed as a nonprofit, so we're going to undertake that process. And it's, it's not a five oh one C three or a C four, it's five oh one C seven, I think. And I could, I.
I understand it was different.
It, it's a different, so our secretary, Leslie Keane, is looking into what that entails and sectioning it. It'll be a lot easier than, we don't have to do a lot of filing. You know, via nonprofits, you've got to do a very expensive process. We're not going to have to do that. Well, what about the audit income, the who that, at SARFA? We have to go through an audit, that's what I said. Well, we're fortunate.
It's only like thirty-five.
It's fortunate that, that Orange County Water District provides audit, so we did that. It doesn't cost us anything. That's, that was basically, basically ISDOC. Reminder that the quarterly meeting is September twenty-ninth, not October, whatever, we've got a little bit. September twenty-ninth will be the next quarterly meeting. And our first vice president is possibly working on a program. They moved up the, ISDOC quarterly is September twenty-ninth, or, yeah. Okay, the week ago.
The vector district president's going to run for your, who wants to get in the rotation?
That was an interesting interplay where they said that the vector control contended that we prohibited them from being on the ISDOC executive committee.
I think at one time they were not considered members of ISDOC and then something changed to where they were considered as independent special districts.
Yeah, I thought Leslie Keane answered that very adeptly. I mean, and sure, we, we're glad to have vector control.
What's he going to answer?
I think, what, second vice pres, whatever they're getting at the bottom rung?
Third vice president.
Yeah, third vice president, yeah. And you, you two at the top right now?
Maybe.
I'm ready for president. Unless my board is the president. Oh, I just love it. I do that. Okay, that's, that's really it for ISDOC. Arlene, what?
I already told you about June, which we, CSDA did the strategic planning for the year, which is coming up. And in September, we will be, that's all of you should be scheduling, the conference in San Diego for September. October, I'm sorry. You know what, I'm, I'm looking at.
October ninth through the fourth, Sunday through, possibly.
Yeah, I have it, the ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth.
Yeah, I have it on the.
And thirteenth, yeah. So anyway, it should be a good one. And we're up for a lot of rewards, so that's very important too, that we all show up and look good there. And then also, legislation-wise, we have just been kind of at a low because legislators went out for a little bit. And so they're coming back again now. And, and so I'm going to go up there in August. And we should be talking then, you know, about more legislation. I'll let you know. And on this Little Hoover Commission, it is important that budget-wise, we budget everything and don't have something like, say, in reserve. The word reserve is not a good word, because that's something they look at and they think, if you have a reserve, then, you know, we can take it. But it's, you know, we'll do a different category if you ever do that. I think you said a different word for it. I can't remember what the word was. But as long as we have something that they can look at, but they, they will be going around looking at all the agencies again, probably. We haven't had this in years. And it'll take a while for them to establish themselves, but they, they feel very strong that they need to look and see that all agencies are doing what they should. And if they're not, then, you know.
I think the first Little Hoover hearing is August twenty-fifth, or there's some date. And the Mesa directors made a big point of them attending this because it's going to be focused on consolidation. So I, I think it would be who?
That's unfortunate, yes.
Well, the, the hearing would be during the day.
Are they meeting online?
I don't know where they're meeting and I'm not sure they have the right date. I know it's the latter part of August.
Well, Lonnie, would you mind making enough to check that?
They said they meet in Sacramento. I don't know, yeah, but they said they'd meet in Sacramento.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Well, they probably, they probably have more than one hearing and they probably meet once in Northern California, once in Southern.
Did you just double-check Little Hoover?
But I think we ought to consider also potentially at least listening to what those commissioners have on their mind.
Sure. Okay, that's it, though.
Other meetings? Oh, SDRMA. I have an SDRMA board meeting next week, so I'll fill you in next month on that. We have a board meeting on Wednesday and Thursday, and then the following week on Wednesday and Thursday, we will be visiting the Cambria Community Services District. The Cambria Healthcare District. And then the next day, we're meeting with the Templeton Community Services District. And this is all on SDRMA's, no expense to the customers of San Antonio District for transportation. And I'm, it could drive to Sacramento on Tuesday after ISDOC. Hope my wife can do it. Okay, we, well, I think Arlene and I did, you attend the WICO meeting, Jim?
No, I was, I didn't.
I did, it was Jim.
It was Jim. Yeah, I did, yeah. I'll just give you some highlights from it.
Yeah.
Metropolitan Water gave a presentation from the back of the minute. They purchased five parcels in the Delta. They purchased five islands in the Delta, which is a pretty smart move.
That's what Boston did, huh? The judge, the judge finally getting the okay.
Yeah, so it was just, I thought that was kind of interesting.
To dr, to be able to drill?
I, I'm not sure what, they didn't say what the reasoning was, but they're just purchasing, you know, and then the judge getting the okay. So I don't know. I thought that was pretty interesting. And then they're going to raise the level of Shasta Dam, if they're going to double the water size.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. Which is, that was pretty good. There's a lot of water.
A lot of water.
They're going to double the size.
They're releasing a lot of water.
And then they had a panel of different people from, they had panel questions about the drought. Some of the, like Keith, I see Keith from Assistant Manager, Director of Public Service in San Diego. He gave some suggestions on the drought. He said they're, they're advocating low water use for, in plants with low water use. New development rules, so if there's new development coming in, there's going to be new rules for those houses being built. Smart controls for your homes. And use of reclaimed water is like eighty percent in San Diego for all of the golf courses and other, they're in the watering capital. And they had a Melissa Braun Haley from, she's from, she was, or Steve, okay. She was a water use efficiency program specialist for Metropolitan Water. She does new construction homes, same thing, construction and landscape watering, more drip irrigation systems, just public landscaping. Early involvement in that, and architects working with the water, turf being replaced, accounting for landscapes. Rainwater systems being protected, rainwater. So they have a lot of ideas for the drought. And then there's one gentleman, Jim Holitz from Shade Homes, they did the same thing, develop builders and systems for water usage, use smart controllers. Use of reclaimed water, gray water systems in new homes. I'm not sure what that meant, gray water systems in new homes.
Well, what they'll do is if you take a shower, do dishes, instead of going down into the sewer, that water will, I guess, go into a holding tank or something. For watering your lawn and.
We had a, we had a presentation, I think, from, from a board member who was trying to, he was trying to push that on us, yeah.
Well, they basically, they basically all said the same thing, but in different terms. And like Jim, Arlene, they kind of, I don't know if they had to add or not.
Yeah, I think that may know.
Well, they, there is a new law, well, the legislature passed a law, sometime in the spring, or in between the spring and the summer. It's going to be mandated that all residences go towards having low flush.
Yeah, that was one of the things they did. That was one of the things. Can't be any more than one point six gallons for the toilet flush coming in.
And, and cities are now taking that ordinance and saying, on point of sale, you have to disclose, you don't meet the.
Yeah, that's, that comes effect January two thousand seventeen, so you're right.
Yeah, the two cities already have made ordinance, Pasadena and somewhere else. Well, I wasn't at the meeting, but I was reading.
That's pretty good.
You know, with all that low flow and the, and the recycling of the gray water, that's going to hurt, heated groundwater replenishment at a certain extent, won't it? Won't it, won't it reduce some of the inflow over there?
It'll be very slow. But they will.
That'll, that'll be more new construction that's going to develop that.
Well, no, it applies to the construction.
Let you do a remodel. Yeah, yeah, but not for the.
No, well, I, I'll bet.
I don't know, I don't know.
I'll bring you the article when I come back from the case.
They're leaving again.
Yeah.
That was, that's the report from WICO. That was pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's hard to do.
What we're talking about are the meetings. Last month, we approved sending myself and Gina to Swana Conference in August. And we've had a change of plan with that. My schedule's not going to allow me to go, so Scott, Gina's not going either.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just have the award paid off to us.
Okay, we have talked about sending Gina and Elizabeth. That Elizabeth, being a new mom, doesn't really want to catch herself and her boy or so. So that, that motion that we did last month has been canceled, so we're not going to incur the expense to go to the Swana Conference.
But we're still getting awards.
Yes. They can't, they can't take any award away from us. Okay.
We don't want to send Gina by herself.
Yeah, yeah, Scott, I mean, that'd be.
This is in Indianapolis.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
It's a garden city.
I think it's a garden city.
In August. I was trying to look in forward, I figured I could lose about forty pounds of humidity that day.
Now you get off the plane.
Okay, no old business this evening, so we'll go to item number twenty-two on our new business. Scott, you want?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a resolution nominating President Schaefer to serve on the executive committee of the Independent Special District as, as president.
I'll move it. Second. Discussion? Treat that in a minute. Called the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries unanimous five to zero. You'll forward that to Heather by us. Thank you for your vote of confidence, Director.
No, I think you do a great job. I just don't know why you want to do it.
Oh, yeah, we got to get you some pay later. Yeah, I, I have a couple of, we need our voice. Twenty-three, resolution twenty sixteen, eight ninety-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution nominating Assistant Secretary Schaefer to, and, and we have to make a correction on this. First vice president, such as vice president. We got to make a correction. We'll make it first vice president, nominating her as first vice president to the executive committee of ISDOC.
I'll move it. Second.
I have a question. What are the duties of your first vice president?
Program. Okay, good. I agree.
Well, is this first program? We nominate you, but can other agencies nominate other people?
It'll, it'll go to a vote in the district.
So it'll go to a vote of all the special districts?
Yeah.
I'm going.
I can't even give her the same accolades you gave me.
You might die before you have to be the president.
We all might. We have, we have a motion in the second to, for a resolution. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous five to zero. Okay, any other oral communications and director comments?
Is Mesa on our list? You know, I've signed up a couple of Mesa meetings. Yeah, Mesa on our list for meeting attendance.
It is.
Because then I'll have two meetings.
Looks like the city does, too.
You know, I, you know, I won't be here for the study session and I won't be here for the board meeting, so if I get approval, we have a good representation. But just, if, if there's any good pop stuff, you can note if I need to do an email pop. Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to listen.
Any other comments from the directors? Just one from me. Your report, we haven't gotten a copy of it at the board. Can we get that out to everybody tomorrow? Yep.
I'd like one tonight.
I'll, I'll say it out tonight.
Okay.
And can we get a copy of the proposed ballot measure? Can we get a copy of the proposed ballot measure that you have?
Or will it change something?
Her ballot.
We have to argue.
Actually, I can, I can.
That's a major, but I've been making, making transactions on it.
I'll make a copy and give it to you.
Sure. But that's not final, is it? But that's not final, is it, is that...
No, that is not, it's... They approved, didn't they approve the paper version? They would have to go back and... That, that is the modified, yeah, but there was a staff report, because the version, this is the modified version. Well, this is the modified one.
Yeah, the one that, that, you know, that, all these printing is modified version.
And they got it printed pretty quick, then.
No, they went on, they took the five-minute journey, but, you know, to, to make it available to you.
Yeah, and they ran it off, and that's the version.
Well, that's...
So, unless they change it between now and August twelve, that is, that is the...
Um, just a final comment from me, and this is really a vote of confidence to our staff, through all the trials and tribulations and all this nonsense, you guys have been professional, above-board, transparent, and, uh, thank you, you know, thank you, and please tell all your staff, all of you guys have kept this really above-board, and I know it's difficult for you as much as it's difficult, probably more difficult for you than it is for us at times, so thank you for your hard work and diligence and, and everything that's been done.
Thank you.
Okay, um, at this point, I'm gonna, uh, yes, sir.
Ooh, when you make the announcement, I, I hear how it screams, but...
Oh, I knew you, I knew you.
I, I have a comment on number twenty-seven, I'm gonna...
I, I'm gonna do you a favor, put number twenty-seven on your screen.
You're, you're about to make the closed session announcement, and I said, no, I'm, I'm gonna be, uh, critic. So, I, I'm twenty-seven, I'm saying we, you need to meet in closed session, because the district is facing significant exposure to litigation of some sort. Normally, the litigation or exposure liability that you may have comes in one of three categories. It, it could be a threat of some kind that you received, in which case you're supposed to disclose that. It could be that there are facts that a potential litigant knows about, and you're worried that the litigant is gonna sue the district. The second category, in which case the facts are supposed to be disclosed to the public. And the third category is that there might be facts or circumstances that somebody could sue the district, but doesn't know what those are, and you sincerely believe that the potential litigant doesn't know what they could be suing about, in which case you don't have to disclose what that is. But I think the public deserves to know which of those three categories it is, and that's a press.
And, Mr. President, I, I agree with what Mr. Moser says, I, I'm not sure why this is on, but I'm, I was gonna recommend that we not have a closed session, I can...
Are you the item?
No, I, I've consulted, it's, it's item number three, that we just talked about, it's, that's the reason why, you did the, the third reason's the, that's why. The one you just mentioned, the third, that's the third one, which we don't have to disclose it, that's, that's the one, I, I, we talked about this. Yeah.
Is the duty a closed, yes?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, we do need a close, I'm sorry, I forgot the subject then, yeah.
Okay.
It was a, okay.
Yeah.
But on, on number, uh, I'm sorry, on number, uh, twenty-six, I can just report that, uh, Attorney General hasn't completed the report yet, so I have nothing.
Could we kind of, with the current Attorney General running for the Senate, we probably won't see anything go after the first three years, if they're earlier?
Well, it's the deputy Attorney General, so, yeah, yeah, the Attorney General would, unfortunately, they'll have to wait for her.
I just wanted she would be involved, just, just...
Only, uh, very peripherally.
She's in Philadelphia right now, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, then...
I'm sorry, I'd forgotten what, uh, twenty-seven was about, yeah.
Then I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting to closed session.
Mr. President?
I can't believe the reporter stuck it out the whole meeting. All right, I'm gonna reconvene the Board of Directors of the Department of Sanitary District to op- open session and report that, under item twenty-seven, um, our closed session, we have given our, uh, general manager direction regarding a course of action, uh, to resolve a personnel matter.
No, just, just gave direction.
Oh, gave direction on the, on a personnel matter?
Just gave, just gave the manager director, on item twenty-seven.
On anticipated litigation, I think, sorry. Okay, any other items for the board?
Yep.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.